You will probably notice that we have some new screens and we have a new timer up here so that everyone will see how much time they have. Anybody doing public speaking has three minutes per person. And we will watch the clock and you can watch the proceedings. I believe that I will call the meeting to order officially. And would you call the roll?
Councilman DeCecio. Councilwoman Guevara.
Here.
Councilwoman Mendoza. Councilman Noakowski. Councilwoman Pastor. Councilwoman Stark. Vice Mayor Waring.
Here.
Mayor Williams.
Here. Our interpreter today, is there an interpreter here? It was supposed to be Alex Torres, is he here? He'd be here shortly, okay. Next brings us to citizens comments. I do have a couple cards, Diane Barker. Followed by Sean Severn.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. I'm Diane Barker and I'm residing in District 7. And I was glad to see some people were able to get out and vote and those that had some trouble, I want our election system to work harder. And Mayor, I know you're interested in cooling down Phoenix and I think it's a good idea. I was out at the McCain Memorial today and somebody said, gee, the city of Phoenix must have put some tents out here. I said, well, it's by the state capitol. It may be the state, but it's all our money. We're interested in having the people covered in this heat. So what I'm suggesting to you, whether it was the city sidewalk or at the convention center, that when tempers fly when people get hot. And we, I saw a couple people down in the heat too. So what we can do to cool downtown and in these coming conventions that are political, if you can see that the people most of the time are around in the shade, I think that would be a better idea. Thank you.
Thank you. I know they're working on it. Sean? May I come forward? Followed by Wally Graham.
Mayor and members of council. First of all, I'd like to welcome our two newest councilwomen, especially, you know, in District 5. I know there's a lot, for you councilwoman, there's a lot of faith that the community has in you, so I really, I hope that you do live up to that. Thirty-seven officers involved shootings. There were two more over the weekend. This council has ignored the community in every aspect, in every way that they possibly can. But I'm really hopeful with some of the changes that we can at least get closer, that we can start listening to the community when they come, when they speak. As we all probably saw in Mesa, you know, what happened there with the findings of that police reviewing other police. So when the community repeatedly comes and asks for a police review board, when they ask even for a victims fund, I hope, I really hope, I'm so hopeful, that that dialogue starts to change. Thank you.
Thank you. Wally? And then the next one will be Jay.
I have a petition, so may I give this to someone? Thank you. Thanks a lot. Good afternoon, Mayor and members of council. I'm doing something unusual today. I usually come before you in other ways, but today I'm presenting a petition of one. My purpose is to request a halt to the city of Phoenix Planning and Development Department's reviewing, reviewing a project that will provide a property owner the gift of a public alley for use as a private driveway on the east side of 4418 East Osborne Road. I've been working on this for two years and we've given lots of information and evidence that this shouldn't happen. I'm requesting the city council appoint an impartial outside arbitrator to hear the issues neighbors and I have raised for almost two years about the gift of this alley as a driveway. The gift has been given by the Director of Planning and Development to a person who was at the time a part-time city employee, who was also acting as an attorney for a developer, who was the owner of 4418 East Osborne Road at the time that the request was made. The planning and development department has shown they cannot act impartially. Please appoint someone who can. Neighbors and I would like to see the property developed. They, there are alternatives to using the alley as a driveway, but the current developer and previous owner are trying to take the cheap and easy way out. I believe the issues need to be assessed independently and the practice of holding non-public technical alley hearings without any input from residents should cease. In this case, there are the following issues. One, it's almost an ethics issue and I, I'm not saying that the planning and development director is unethical, but it is if you're giving something to a friend and an employee. Safety issues involved in, for adjacent residents along an alley that will become a driveway. Increased volume of traffic that was nowhere near like 1962, which was the picture they used to show that there was access. There are other options for entrance and egress to this particular property. Alley technical appeals do not solicit or consider residential concern, property owner concerns, rights, and needs of, of the residents in an alley appeal. I appreciate your attention to this matter. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jay? Only have one name on the card, Jay.
So, talking about the light rail, we do not, not want the light rail at all. And also I want to start out with, you know, people have been coming up here talking for a long time, years and years, but do we really see help? And I don't see no help, not much at all. So, we're gonna go to the people. People, if you're not getting helped, stop supporting these people's businesses. Stop giving them your money. That's how they're gonna listen. They ain't gonna listen to us word, with words. We gotta stop giving them our money. If they got businesses, stop giving them money. Don't, don't support their businesses. If they're not helping us, don't support them. So I just want to ask y'all a question, so, about this light rail. Y'all know that this light rail is gonna hurt a lot of families. It gonna, it's gonna move a lot of people out of their homes, children gonna be moved out of their homes, and you still want the light rail. You know that's not right, so why do you want the light rail? That means you're not, you're not really trying to help us. And we have ways, the community, we know how to help our people 100%. Y'all say the light rail helps some people, but it only helps a percentage of people. We know how to help people 100%. So you also say that the South Side, the South Side needs the light rail in order to bring more business and money to the, to the South Side. But look at Scottsdale. Scottsdale has some of the best education, some of the best businesses, and Scottsdale has a lot of money. But what, the Scottsdale does not have a light rail. So why do y'all say that we need a light rail on the South Side? Y'all not fooling us. We do not need the light rail on the South Side. Education brings more business and money, not the light rail. No light rail on the South Side. And to wrap it up, like I said, the community, we know what our community needs. We know how to help our community 100%, not 50% like the light rail. Some things that are, some things that have helped our community that we know of, because we live this every day. What we know is, you got, you got buses that run every 30 minutes. Instead of running every 30 minutes, make the buses run every 15 minutes. Bring more shuttle buses to the South Side. Bring shuttle buses to the South Side. Three or four shuttle buses. We need a, I call it the transfer loudspeaker timer on the bus. And this is, for example, like, if you on a bus and you riding down maybe Central, riding down Central, and you pass Southern, that loudspeaker timer should say, when you passing down Southern, that speaker timer should say, the Southern bus is coming in five minutes. Or if you passing down baseline, the speaker should say, the, the next baseline bus is coming in 10 minutes, so the people can know.
Thank you.
Where they going. So we know how to help our community, stop playing with us. And stop giving them y'all money if they're not gonna really help us.
Thank you.
Please.
Okay. Could you read the 24-hour paragraph, please?
The titles of the following ordinance and resolution numbers on the agenda were available to the public at least 24 hours prior to this council meeting and therefore may be read by title or agenda item only. Ordinance is number G6485 through 6490, S44902 through 44956, and resolutions 21659 through 21670.
Thank you. Next, we have no minutes for approval today, so we will go to boards and commissions. Vice Mayor?
Mayor, move to approve mayor's boards and commission nominations.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Council boards?
Move to approve city council boards and commission nominations.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Do we have people here? Do you have the card? Thank you all for doing this. All right. Raise your right hand. I state your name.
I am the Senator.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the laws of Arizona.
And the laws of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies.
And defend them against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the office of an institure. Which ones?
And faithfully and impartially discharge.
Duties of?
And faithfully and impartially discharge.
According to the best of my ability, so help me God.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next is liquor license applications. Vice Mayor?
Mayor, I move to approve items 3 through 48, except item 48.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further conversation? Hearing none. Everyone in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item 48, we have a card on. And I have a question, I think it's probably for Alan. It might be for you. This is the off-track bedding. Do we have anything in writing that regulates the distance between these facilities?
Mayor, members of the council, my name is Denise Archibald with the City Clerk Department. This application is for an off-track bedding license permit from the state, and currently there is not a regulation in state law related to distance requirements. Related to the zoning ordinance, I'll defer to Department Director Alan Stevenson.
Thank you.
Mayor, members of council, we do not have any spacing requirements for off-track bedding facilities as part of the zoning requirements.
Can we legally do so?
Mayor, councilwoman, members of council, we'd have to look into that from a state statute standpoint to see if we could do something, because the state does specifically authorize the off-track bedding. We have to see if that's something we could do. I'm happy to explore that if that's your direction.
I, I would appreciate it, because I understand that the state has issued new licenses and that, I, I don't, I want to protect the neighborhoods and make sure that they are spread far enough apart, that there's still a good business for each person that has one, but the neighborhoods are protected, so we don't have them clustered anywhere. So if you could pursue that, I'd really appreciate it.
We'll look into that, Mayor, and then report to you and let you know what we find out.
Thank you very much. We have Tom Arthur.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, my name's Tom Arthur. I'm here representing Arizona Downs. We purchased the former Yavapai Downs up in Prescott and we've rebranded it as Arizona Downs. It will be open for racing starting next May, Memorial Day through Labor Day. The way we will develop purses is the way everybody develops purses in this state or the other track, and that's via off-track bedding parlors. There is no, within the city of Phoenix, distance requirement between OTBs. We have approached the existing track about working out a partnership. We've been rebuffed on that and as a result, we, with the support of the Horsemen's Association and the Arizona Racing Commission, have set about procuring our own off-track bedding network. I, I, I don't think there's anything to fear from somebody who's gonna go bed on a horse race. It's not, you know, it's not a bunch of hooligans or anything. It's, it's a legal activity. Well, well, you know, very, with very rare exceptions, we'll probably never be within a couple miles of anybody, mile, mile and a half. By preventing a new establishment, you're, you would be preventing them from making a living, just as you would be attempting to protect the existing OTB. So I don't know what side you come down on, but I guess that's my statement. Pardon?
I come down on the neighbor's side. I just want to make sure.
Well, and they have a-
I want you all to be profitable. I just have a concern.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And they all, I think, a 60-day comment period, and I don't think we got any comments.
So, well, we have one coming.
Yesterday. Yep. And, and you know, I think, the only comment we've seen comes from, whether it matters to you or not, I don't know, is a Gondal business. So, but any rate.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor. I'm the owner of Stinger's Sports Bar on 43rd Avenue and Imperial, which is about one mile away from Bull Shooter, where they want to put the new OTB in. And it's gonna impact my business, because we are so close to each other. And the station that we have right now is owned by Turf Paradise, and they put a great deal of effort into deciding where each OTB should be, so they don't compete with each other. And I think that if, you know, you guys allow a new OTB to be just one mile away from each other, we're gonna have OTB everywhere. If there's no rules and regulation in terms of how far they are apart, then, you know, every neighborhood would be, you know, have a place to gamble for, you know, you have gambling site every corner. And that's, you know, the concern that I have, you know, my business and also, you know, for the whole neighborhood, that, you know, I don't want to see, you know, a gambling, you know, OTB, off-track bedding in sports and horses everywhere. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion?
Move to approve my item 48.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further conversation, discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. I'm going to run back. We, our interpreter is here. Alex Torres. Are you Alex Torres? Didn't look like it. Could you introduce yourself?
Anna Arvayio, interpreter, Your Honor. I apologize for the delay. The interpreter who was scheduled to be here had an accident. It wasn't able, I was to come.
Oh, hope he's okay. All right. But thank you for coming. Brings us to the omnibus.
Thank you. Mayor, I move to approve items 49 to 159, except items 88, 94, 95, 104, 108, 130, and 159.
Do we have any other cards on any of these items? Hearing none. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
DeCecio. Guevara.
Yes.
Mendoza.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Mayor Williams.
Yes. Motion passes unanimously. We will-
Mayor, may I make a motion to suspend the rules and take items 94, 95, and 130 out of order?
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion passes. We will go to now item 94. Passes unanimously.
Do you want a motion? I'm gonna do it. I move item 94.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
DeCecio. Guevara.
Yes.
Mendoza.
Yes.
Noakowski. Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Mayor Williams.
Yes. Brings us to item 95.
I move item 95.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Guevara.
Yes.
Mendoza.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Mayor Williams.
Yes. Please, that brings us to item 130.
Mayor, move to approve item 130.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. I do believe we have cards on this. Celia Contreras. You can have up to six minutes. You have some people have donated time to you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, councilman, councilwoman. We would like to talk in about the light rail regarding the South Phoenix. In March 21, we come in, the group for laying on a train at these facilities and asking you for a four-lane traffic to each side. And you denied it, our petition, and you told us that the 70% of the voters agree with the light rail, and this is why you cannot decline it. In March 31, you tell us we are a handsful, scary businesses only. So in, in May 31, we make it, the business owners, the forum for input the community. And we have their South DeCecio's office, Novakowski's office, and Laura Pastor only. And when Mr. Novakowski come in and take the microphone first time, nobody take it before. The whole community yelling it, then they don't wanted the light rail, not even with four lanes. So that community, they have no mercy. We only asking for lanes, but you don't want to hear us. But that community, if we input the community, we need to listen to the community and you play that game. So we go for the community, we input the community, we make the community forum, and the community say no to the light rail, regardless, one, or two, or six, or 100 lanes, no at the light rail. And in June 19, we come in here and ask you the totally stop of the light rail for 90 days, and you can input the community to see what is the public transportation or massive transportation in the community wants. We hear about Laura Pastor sending a message and they said, she said, the South Phoenix community, she, they can decide what kind of transportation they wanted. And then I really appreciate that comment, because it's true. Any community, they can voting about what kind of massive transportation they want, not only a few peoples. We say no to the light rail, and then you voting for have those meetings, six meetings with the community. We don't asking for these meetings. You exchange the vote for the budget, exchange for these meetings. We don't asking for that. And now you promise to us, then it's an independent company, the one who input those meetings, and you don't honor your word. Because it's the Ballet Metro, the CEO of Ballet Metro, the one who, who input the community, but not independent company. So you don't honor your own word. So we say no to the gentrification. We don't wanted the property tax increase. Example, example, the ASU prep and the Fillmore, they're increased already 800% of the renting, because you increased the property taxes in that, in that place. We don't wanted the crane. We don't wanted the homeless hotel in our area. We don't wanted, how do you expect that, you said the South Phoenix is low-income community? You put us like a trash, then we are poor people. How do you expect that poor people can manage the light rail if it's Gondal, if it's Shandler, they're already fighting against the light rail. Poor Mesa. Poor Mesa, because the ex-mayor of Mesa, give it to the light rail, anything, foregone Mesa and destroy Mesa. Right now Mesa is a ghost. The whole business is broken. We don't wanted the four-year construction. We don't wanted, one of the members of the Realtors in a private meeting at the Realtors, they say it, then they don't care the businesses in South Phoenix. Their, the majority of the business in South Phoenix, they don't, they don't have to be there and they need a gun. And this is a people that you put in the name of the community working group. And that we don't want to pay for the cost of the I-70 destruction and rebuild, and it's not only the bridge, it's like a one mile before and one mile after. It's a lot of money in this project that they, they cannot pay herself. We don't want you destroy our historical bridge here close to the downtown. We don't want a one-lane traffic on Rio Salado Bridge or rebuilding the bridge. We don't wanted the roundabouts in Central Avenue. We don't wanted you impacting 50 properties around in South Phoenix, including Church's Chicken, it's gonna be disappear just because your pet project. We don't wanted the vibration of the light rail in our streets destroying our communities. We don't want it, then you expend the money and groups that supposed to be, has to come in and input the community, and they don't input the community nothing. They just make his meeting in between her and between his 30, 20 people. And, and, and then, I don't buy any nickel at the city of Phoenix. Mayor, I see you try to stop me, but you have to waiting for my time. And you, you guys pay all those kind of people who don't have any relationship with the light rail, with the businesses, then they're just working for the communities, you know, registered voters and, and-
Thank you. Your time's up. Yeah.
Well, unless I ask your questions, Mayor. So I, may I ask her a question?
Again, would you- Again, would you also like to explain this item is not on the light rail?
Well, it's, it relates to the light rail. It's an eight-hour rule, Mayor.
Well, yeah, but I think you probably, an eight-hour rule is the council or council members who want a specific research by staff has to get the approval of the entire council for staff to spend eight hours researching for us. And that's what this is on having us have staff research options so that we can repave the city, all the streets, all the collectors and the arterials.
Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Just to finish up on that, it does relate to it because we're talking about, if I remember correctly, twenty-fifty. And twenty-fifty dealt with a big portion of that, at least five billion dollars worth went to the light rail. I would like to have her finish, if that's okay. I mean, I, or I could ask her questions, and then she can finish from there. But at the end of the day.
How much longer? We have a.
I would like to finish, Miss Mayor. We, we spent so.
And Mayor, she's right about that because what happened was, she's had several neighborhood meetings where city staff has either refused to go to or not go to. They had hundreds of people there. They had a lot of people there. I mean, make no mistake about it. Celia is a very capable, smart individual who knows how to get things done and knows how to fight City Hall. I would like to have her have the opportunity as the leader of that group, be able to finish her presentation. How much longer is it going to be, Celia? Can it be just done in maybe a minute or two? Okay. Otherwise, I'm gonna ask her a question.
Thank you, Mr. DeCecio.
I just know we have a council member that needs to leave fairly soon, so I was trying to accommodate him as well as all the other cards.
The City of Phoenix, they pay doce dolares por hora para repartir estos door handles. Then Jim Waring already say it's not working. And I receive random people coming to my business and give it to me all this bunch of door hangers, throw it in the, in the sidewalk, in the buildings, in the walkings. It's here our money. This is our tax money. This is it. Ballet Metro make this, and they pay twelve dollars for our taxes to input that community. I know we need to stop this light rail. I know Ms. Pastor asking the ladies who occupy the new cities if they support the light rail. Please, don't ask it if they support the light rail. Asking if they support the community, not the projects. We don't want you make reach the people who put the money for your campaigns. You need to fighting for the community. This is more five thousand people asking you stop the light rail, and you want to stop the light rail in your communities. But you want to put the garbage in my community, and we don't play with that. We need to fix our streets besides to make this Ballet Metro light rail. Thank you.
Thank you.
Francis Castillo?
Yeah. Francis?
Good afternoon, Council. Thank you for this time. I don't even know where to begin because I've lived in this area where the light rail is going to affect me directly, two weeks, two blocks from my home and in front of my church, St. Catherine's of Siena. You have heard over and over, the community, it's not totally against the light rail. We just don't want it on Central. We believe that Twenty-Fourth Street would be so appropriate because it connects to the airport and to South Mountain College. And Central, as it is, is congested already. Many accidents daily on Central. And it's come to our understanding that one of your council members is already concerned about the light rail going in her area. And for what all the reasons are that she doesn't want it in her area, we don't want it in ours either. We really hope you consider the petitions, the request, our time to be here away from our duties, the expense of the overpass having to be torn down, and the countless amounts of money that really could be used elsewhere in South Phoenix. So many projects that are not finished. The Salt River looks like a slim. The cement company left it blank there. It's horrible. So many areas where you could put the money to make our South Mountain beautiful, to make it possible that one day there could be a light rail that wouldn't only stop at baseline, but go to South Mountain Park where they could pass the day there picnicking, enjoying our beautiful park that many people have never been to. So we really hope for your consideration, for all the above that Miss Celia Cruz Contreras has expressed that you take to heart and consider the light rail in another area, please. Thank you so much.
Byron Waldrop? Byron? Followed by Felix Tofora? Tofoya? Am I saying it wrong?
Tofoya, yeah.
Okay.
City council members? Again, I'm before you, and I'm speaking to you again about the safety of the light rail. As Jim Warren has had trouble on Nineteenth Avenue and needing six hundred thousand dollars more just for protection for the people riding the light rail, so will South Phoenix. That's one point two million dollars just in extra security. The people of South Phoenix, we've had several meetings, and the people do not want it. Final answer is no. We went with, okay, let's, let's try to get four lanes or no train. Now it is, because we can't get four lanes, we don't want it. We know what kind of blight it's gonna cause, what kind of people being. It's just gonna be unsafe. We don't want it. All of our community meetings we've had, everybody raises their hand at the end, do you want it or not? No, they don't want it. If you don't want to hear the community, if you don't want, care about the citizens of Phoenix, keep going, and we will do our best to stop you.
Thank you. Felix Tofora? Followed by Jesse Guzman?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilmembers. As a lifelong citizen of South Phoenix, I would be happy to see revitalization to our community. However, I do not believe the light rail was honestly portrayed to the citizens of South Phoenix, and I do not believe it would benefit us for now or in the future. We were not given information as to how it will affect traffic in our area. We also were not given information as to how crime rate may increase as it has in other neighborhoods that have the light rail. I believe Mr. or Councilman Waring did an interview on that, on the statistics of that. This will, in effect, cause more expenses because we need more policemen to protect us. There are many upgrades and repairs that need to be done in our area that have gone undone, such as simple sidewalks. I live in South Phoenix right off Roser, and I live by CJ Jorgensen School. There's no sidewalk for the kids to go to school. So when it rains, if they walk on my side of the, of the road, there's no sidewalks, and on the other side, there's no sidewalks either. And I've made petitions to the city, and it's gone unheard, but they want to put a light rail with billions of dollars, but we need to start with the youth. We really do. We were not told that the cost would be in the billions, and that the taxpayers would foot much of the cost, or that Central Avenue would be reduced to two lanes. I live in South Phoenix, so that's where I want to live. I've lived here my entire life. I've lived in the same home. I hope our movement is able to stop the light rail and maybe do better improvements for South Mountain area. Thank you.
Jesse Guzman? Followed by Steve Sieg?
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, I'd like to thank you for your time today. I'm here to oppose the light rail. I've lived in the South Phoenix community for twenty-nine years of my life, and I have the privilege to also work there. I work at South Mountain Ace Hardware, and I ask you this. How will the light rail improve South Phoenix? Also, the crime rate. Yesterday, me and my wife drove up Central Avenue from Rambeau into McDowell. I seen three different instances involving police at the light rail system. I ask you, again, how would that benefit South Phoenix? That's pretty much all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Sieg? S-I-E-G. Oh, up there. Oh, can we take a microphone to him, please? And then Rose Marie? Go ahead, please.
Yes. Whoa. Finally got it working. I've, I've been here in South Phoenix almost totally since nineteen sixty-eight. So I've seen a lot of changes. I've seen a lot of good things, a lot of bad things. But this is totally unbelievable that they even want to do this. Number one, they're gonna ruin all the culture. Number two, safety issues alone. Right now, we have a lot of traffic problems. Anytime during the rush hours or anything, it's traffic jam city. If you, if you cut it down to one lane, it's going to totally gridlock. They say this is gonna help, help decrease pollution. A car idling puts out ten times pollution of one driving. And if you have fifty billion cars stopped, totally stopped because of whatever, an accident, emergencies, which also, that's another thing. If you have one lane each way, you're going to totally, it's gonna be life-threatening to the people of South Phoenix in emergencies. Police, fire, ambulance, anything. It's, I can't believe it's such a big boondoggle of expenses. They're gonna have to take out the Central Bridge, replace it. They're gonna have to take out the bridge over the freeway and replace it. They're gonna have to take the underpass just before you get into downtown and replace it. I'm just actually appalled and amazed that they've come up with this idea, and that they're not listening to the people that lives down there. That this is gonna directly affect, it's gonna, it's, it's gonna tremendously affect the people crime-wise. Because if you look at the statistics of where it is at now, their way, crime is way up, and I'm out of time too. And thank you, and I wish I had more time to say more, but it's just, it's absolutely, it's amazing that they want to do that to our community. It's just appalling, frankly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Maris Mitchell? And she's followed by Rachel Palapoli?
Hello, Council. My name is Maurice Mitchell. I work for the United States Postal Service. I've been with them for twenty years. And eighteen of those years, I lived in South Phoenix, Arizona. I've talked to my coworkers at work. We're from, we're all over the place, and across the board, everybody that has the light rail in North Nineteenth Avenue and Camelback, all the places that they live, they say that they're, they could send me pictures of how their communities have changed because of this light rail. We do not want that change, those kind of derogatory changes happening in our community. Crime, homelessness, people that ride the light rail just for the AC, and they come in, into their communities and pilfer. Businesses that have died or been closed down because of this, because of the, the access. It cuts off the access to businesses, so people are deterred from going into those businesses. If I, I went to Metro Mall the other day, and I saw people sitting at the bus. And I thought, you know, the light rail is not going to service those people because you still need the bus to get to the light rail. So it, it, it needs, it needs the bus to be even of any service to anybody, so I don't see it as a help. As far as, as far as the, the monies, I wish that the city would consider doing the right thing about giving us things that we need, like sidewalks, like lights in our parks, streetlights, streetlights, beautification like Scottsdale so that we could look better. If you want to help our businesses, if you want to help our economy in South Phoenix, that's where we need the help. Make the buses, you know, fix them if they need fixed. The buses, nobody complains about the bus. We have a good bus system. It's, it's adequate, and it serves our needs. And from, if it's so important that you want to feed the light rail, the buses will take us there. We don't need light rail in our community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rachel? Followed by Scott Beasley?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Rachel Palapoli. I am the owner of Planet Recycling. We are located at sixteen hundred South Central on the corner of Central and Mojave. I've stood before you beforehand, talking about the light rail. I'm here today with regards to this item one thirty, in the hopes that I can appeal so that we can provide some transparency to exactly what it is that this item is going to do. So my curiosity here is, is what is it exactly that you're going to be evaluating? When we look at the T-two thousand fifty, that, that tax money that, that's been set aside, is it possible that that money can be shifted from the light rail to something else, to improve the streets, the parks, put the money somewhere else? So I'm just curious. I'd like some transparency for those folks, including myself, whose business would be directly affected with the light rail, so that we can better understand. I'm in support of giving the staff extra time in excess of eight hours, but can you truly, in less than a month, by September nineteenth, truly sit back and look at this as a feasibility study to say, okay, what are we, where could we shift this money? How could, and can we? And so it's just, everyone's standing up here, but I think that there's a little bit of slight confusion to exactly what this has to do with the light rail. So I'm hoping that maybe you guys can elaborate a little bit on that for us so that we can better understand. Thank you.
Can I respond to that? Can I respond to her? Explain what this item is? Yeah, okay. In twenty-fifty, if you, we approved light rail, we approved street money, two billion for streets, and for buses. It's got three silos of money. And what this is doing is saying, because between the time that was passed and today, a couple of the routes that were on the map for light rail are, Glendale no longer wants it, so the one route connects to nothing. There's a change in the northeast route because it was going to a mall that is appearing to get closer to Metro Center every day. It's being emptied out. So instead of having money invested in starting the planning on that within next year or two, what we are asking staff to do is to look at the transportation, the street money, and see if we can fund all of our, and it's citywide, arterials and collector's streets, and repave them, bring them up to standard within the next five years. If we can delay a couple of those projects on the schedule they're currently on, we could put the money upfront in making those street repairs. Because we have all heard in every district how bad our streets are, including South Phoenix. And we see that as a priority because I, I, for myself, I just think those projects could wait and be delayed a few years. If the environment changes, the business climate changes, and different city changes their mind, then they may be feasible again. But right now, why spend money trying to do planning on them? And that's what the next stage is. Why not take that money and put into the streets? Why not take that money and put into the streets and see? That's what we're asking staff to do, to see if we can do that, how much it would take. But we are restricting it to those particular projected lines in the future, because they've become very questionable. And have them bring back the information. How much could they do? How many streets can they get paved, brought up to good condition, citywide, by using that funds in the next five years? Oh, no. Any project that is underway, whether it's South Central, it's the line to Metro Center, it's finishing the one to the 360 building, those are, stay right on track. It has no impact whatsoever. We are talking the ones that are, were projected to be completed in 32, 36? I'm not sure. I mean, they were towards the very end of the 2050 plan. We're just saying, because we know that planning starts early, don't do that yet. Let's see if we can have two things going. It does not impact South Central or any current project that's underway. No, it doesn't stop. That's a different set of meetings. It's a different, you're going to have a series of meetings, and there'll be a vote on that later this month on how we proceed. Vice Mayor.
So, just for some clarity. So, I agree with what Mayor Williams just said, but a few weeks ago, now, granted, we had different membership then. So we had eight members then, but two of them are different than what we have here now. I made a motion to potentially put something on the ballot, because I'd love to get rid of the light rail at South Central, as I think most of you have kind of mentioned. It's not, since it hasn't happened, you'll save the cheering maybe for later, if it actually ever does. But I made a motion to see, you know, hey, we're kind of on a roll, let's see. And it failed 2 to 6. So we had that motion. I think in fairness, you know, for me, the line going up to the PV Mall, it's not in my district, it's actually in Deb Star's district, but it's very close to my district. My district wraps right around that mall, for those who are familiar. And I think Mayor Williams makes an excellent point, you know, some of this stuff isn't even, they don't even have a path, I don't think, up to the PV Mall. So it's a lot more speculative than what we're talking about here. I'd still love to stop the South Mountain, but, or, excuse me, the South Central, but they're not exactly in the same place. And so if this is something we could do potentially today, to have staff do a study, because today isn't really doing anything other than that, and then we would come back, I think it was on potentially September 19th, to have a discussion about, hey, we could use this money for something else that isn't really already committed. Now, that doesn't preclude, I'd love to make a motion again to get rid of the South Central, but given that it failed 2 to 6 a few weeks ago, and yes, we have two new members, and even if they, you know, flipped the votes of the members who were here before, it's still 4 to 4. I think it's, I think the onus would be on you guys to sort of lobby members of the council and try to find that fifth vote. They get tired of listening to me. So, so do my kids. What are you going to do? At some point, you know, you're beating your head against the wall. So if you guys say something, that'd be fantastic. It does not preclude, I know some of you have been working with folks on this, potentially putting something on the ballot. If this were to pass today, or really more, the September 19th thing were to pass, that affects some of the light rail. It doesn't mean we can't keep working on your issues, and it doesn't mean something couldn't get on the ballot if enough signatures are collected and so forth. So these things are not mutually exclusive. I appreciate your passion in being here, and I completely agree with you. But this was something that we needed to get in motion today, so that we could have the vote on the 19th. But that doesn't mean we couldn't have other votes about other things. You know, happy to certainly, obviously, hear the rest of the comments as well, but just wanted to make sure that everybody kind of understood how this laid out. And that we did kind of have a vote on what you're talking about a few weeks ago, and it didn't go, you know, to our advantage. So, I hope that made sense. Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to continue with the cards. Scott Beasley. Mary Ann Moore. And she would be followed by Stephen Jennings.
I'm a longtime resident of South Phoenix, and I have seen a lot of neglect over the years. We really need to take care of the infrastructure first, before you try to put any light rail or whatever. If you put the light rail down there, even if you give us extra lanes, it's going to push a lot of traffic to 7th Street and 7th Avenue, which are not ready for it. Those need to be expanded. Did you, any of you, I don't know if many of you probably don't even go down South Phoenix. You probably never noticed that the street, streets, the 7th Street, Central, and 7th Avenue are wider in the north part of Phoenix, by a couple of lanes at least. So, those need to be widened. We need turn lanes to get on the freeway. They don't have turn lanes, and people are backed up for blocks because somebody doesn't want to turn, and they could be turning at the red light. We have traffic blocks in the middle of the day. There are large, the companies with large trucks, huge 18-wheelers, that are out on both 7th Street and 7th Avenue all the time. There are not enough, there's not enough sidewalks. My street has no sidewalks, and there are a lot of people that walk on it. The animals on the street are get killed pretty frequently by the speeders on that street. I'm surprised there haven't been people killed yet. But what I'm saying is, we need more lighting, more sidewalks, wider streets. We need a lot of infrastructure. And that's, that needs to be addressed first. There's a company that's building right at 7th Street and the I-10, that has a picture of what they're building there, and they have all this wonderful greenery and trees between their buildings and the street. There could be a turn lane there to get on the freeway.
Thank you.
Should have been taken care of already.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Stephen Jennings, Stephen Jennings. And then Dana Kennedy.
Thank you, mayor. I'm going to allow my colleague Dana Kennedy to speak for AARP instead of me, but I did want to just thank the council for the good work on First Street, directly south of Roosevelt Road. There was a press event there last week. Councilman Noakowski was there and spoke. That is great design. People with four-footed canes, people that use three-wheelers, people in wheelchairs, parents with strollers, will all be able to more safely use that beautiful environment you've created. Thank you very much for the good work there. I also wanted to thank the city staff for their good work on the complete streets, which is going to come to the council in the future. It's been great to work with them.
Thank you.
Oh, there you are. Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. I'm Dana Kennedy, State Director with AARP. I represent 895,000 members in the state of Arizona and over 100,000 members in the city of Phoenix. And I'm glad Councilman Waring brought up how we can put things on a ballot proposition, because that's exactly what we did with Proposition 104. And just to remind people about what was in Prop 104 and what we messaged our members, this is the very first time AARP has supported a local ballot initiative. And as you know, you came to our office and did a teletown hall with our members to talk about what this would do. And it's supposed to improve pedestrian safety by creating more walkable Phoenix through design, shorter crosswalks, and more footprints. It sets up more bus, light rail, and dial-a-ride services, as well as established shelters. Funding additional safety personnel on public transportation, including buses and light rail. And also expanding bicycle paths to improve eco-friendly exercise options. And this was on the ballot in August 23rd. Prop 104 passed by 54% of the voters. Voters 65-plus were 44% of the vote. Voters 50-plus were 32% of the vote. And so voters 50 over, which we represent, was over 77% of the vote. Why does AARP care about transportation? Because it is one of our members' number-one issues. We all look at an aging population and how they will be impacted one day when they're not able to drive. And so we have more people actually moving into the city because of transportation, and the light rail is part of that. And it's about connectivity. So in my opinion, you know, we opposed delaying this process, and we believe that this is just going to kill light rail completely. And so that's my interpretation. Whether that's true or not, that's our interpretation. But we believe that we need to continue on with this process. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Chris Hinkson. And then...
Hello, mayor, council member. My name's Chris Hinkson. I'm the owner of the shopping center located at 7227 South Central Avenue. It's 100,000 square foot shopping center, right on Central Avenue. And I oppose the light rail going down Central Avenue. I think it's a very, will be very detrimental to the community, to the business owners, to the landowners there. I'm 100% for improving the streets. Central Avenue definitely needs improvements, better sidewalks, lighting, bus stops, landscaping. If they made Central Avenue pretty and nice, it would be wonderful. I don't understand why the council is approving the light rail down Central Avenue, because I'm not aware of anybody who wants Central, or the light rail down Central Avenue. So I ask council to please consider stopping light rail now down Central Avenue. Include that in the delay. Focus on improving the road down Central Avenue and saving that billion dollars for other money well spent. Thank you.
Thank you. Manuel Traviso. Manuel Traviso? I may be pronouncing that wrong. That's all the cards we have. Do we have a motion on the floor?
I made a motion.
We have a motion. I believe we have a second?
I think I have a second.
Okay. Discussion, councilwoman?
I have several questions and comments. My question to staff is, what's the real effect of delaying any of our future projects? So if we, what I heard was, we will delay future light rail projects to pave our streets in the next five years. So what would that, what's that effect? If we move forward and make an eight-hour rule? Because the eight-hour rule is for staff to go look at what the cost is going to be regarding paving our streets, which includes light rail, and which includes delaying light rail for the future, up north and the west side. So...
Mayor and Councilwoman Pastor, your question is what we would look at. If the motion is approved today, we would spend the time needed to analyze what kinds of costs might be, or what funds might be available if those particular projects are delayed, and we can bring that information back to the council on the 19th.
So you don't have an answer?
Right. That's what we would need to look at.
So I'm just going to, and I'm going to put these questions out there so that you can look at them. So then when we, right now, we're voting on the eight-hour rule, but in the future, we will be voting on this. And so, so let me just continue. I want to look at, in, as you're looking at this, the diversion of the monies. What type of money will then go towards all our districts? And making sure that if we are going to move money or do the process of paving our streets for the next five years, how, which districts receive those pavings of the streets?
Be citywide.
Well, we will, that's what I want to see in this, in this analyzation, at who, where, where majority of the streets will get paved. Understand that it will be citywide. One of the items that I think what we really need to understand is, as we go down this path, what I call it, is I call it a red herring. And a red herring is something that misleads, distracts from the relevant or important issue. T-2050 was voted on by the voters. And they voted for an item that had buckets, as Mayor Williams has stated. There is money for safety, there is money set aside for street improvements, and then there's money for light rail. And so we are asking staff, as we move the eight-hour rule, because we have to do this formally, to go and analyze what it would cost for paving all the streets and moving that forward versus moving and doing feasibility studies and items like that that happen with the light rail of the future. So that's one thing. You also heard a statement, "It didn't go our way." So here we are. So I'm telling you, so here we are. Now it's on the agenda. So we voted on this with members, two weeks ago, with members that were sitting on here, maybe a month ago. I may be wrong. The members have changed, and now this item is coming to the forefront. It was on the July, I want to say, 5th agenda. It got removed because the votes weren't there. And so this whole piece is really, I'll go back to a word that we spoke about, Councilman Waring and I spoke about last week, of shenanigans. What I find very interesting is that there are council members that are sitting on this dais that didn't support T-2050. However, their constituents did support T-2050, and they supported it the way it was on the ballot. Now we're shifting, and the, I find it interesting that it's going to be shifted in a way after the eight-hour rule, because what will happen is, we'll come back, they'll do an analyzation, and then they'll come back here and say, oh, we can do this, and this is how we can do this, and then we'll vote on it. This is how the process goes and starts. So I'm just giving an analysis of what is happening. Some will argue against me, and I'm prepared for that, but this is how it happens and goes. Thank you.
So, we didn't vote on this. We didn't vote on this. So I don't know what you're talking about. When I said we had a vote, that was on a different motion, different thing. And I said that very clearly and concisely. So, what my motion was, was to pretty much do away with light rail, potentially put it on the ballot and re-vote. That's not what this is. You're right, a couple of weeks ago, we did talk about putting something like this on there, and then the mayor pulled it off the agenda. But we never voted on it. So what you said is just factually wrong. So...
No, we did vote on, not in the particular eight-hour rule. Not on the particular eight-hour floor.
We'll ask Ed, did we have a vote on this a couple of weeks ago?
Not on the eight-hour.
This item?
Please.
We're repeating a vote that we just had?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, my recollection is that on July 5th, there was an item to do an analysis that was withdrawn by the mayor before the council voted on that particular item.
I still get to have the vote, right? So we're having it today. But we didn't have it on the 5th. So we've never voted on this. So really, the whole, undercurrent of your whole argument was just factually wrong.
No, we voted on an item.
Please, he has the floor.
Did we vote on it, Ed? You just said we didn't. So I just want to make sure I heard the answer correctly. We've had a vote on this a couple of weeks ago. That was what was just said. And that's not true.
Please.
Yes, mayor. Let's say if this passes the eight-hour rule, are we going to look at, based on needs, where we're going to put the streets? Because I know that in my district, we have a lot of... Because I know that in my district, we have a lot of half-streets, no sidewalks, no lights. So, I think it's important, too, that we, as a council, get a, get a report on, based on needs and communities also. A lot of people that were testifying today were actually testifying on a different subject regarding the light rail going down Central Avenue. I was the person that brought to the mayor's attention that there was a lack of outreach to some of the businesses in South Phoenix and the community in South Phoenix, and that we should have a hearing on it. The mayor agreed that the community should be heard, and from that meeting, we all agreed that we would pick a mediator that was basically neutral, that wasn't a part of the city staff or Valley Metro. Is that still going on?
Yes. It is. And we have the community meetings, which are listed on this card that we received.
And then, one of the things out there, too, that's, I was asked at a couple of these grassroots meetings that I attended, is that how much money is being spent on the South Mountain Light Rail project? As is, right now?
Mayor, Councilman Noakowski, it's approximately a billion dollars is in total is what is planned for the South Central Light Rail extension.
And the other question I have, just for clarification for those individuals, I didn't have the information to give them. But with, if for some reason, the light rail didn't happen in South Phoenix, would that, could that billion dollars be relocated back to fixing up Central Avenue, the streets, sidewalks, lights, and businesses along the light rail path as is today?
Councilman Noakowski, of the, of those funds, most of that is actually federal, would be federal funds specifically allocated to the light rail project. So, those funds would not be available. Some of those funds are regional funds, which are designated for light rail within the Maricopa County region. But a, but a little bit over $200 million would come from the city portion, the city match, Prop 104-T-2050, and that would be up to the city council to make a determination what to do with that based on the parameters of the, of the ballot measure.
But that's not close to a billion dollars at all, is it?
Correct.
The other question is that what we're voting on today is nothing to do with South Central Light Rail or the extension to Metro Center. This is basically an eight-hour rule to allow our staff to look at future light rail routes besides the one I just named, and to look at different options that you can do with the money?
Correct. That's my understanding. Councilman Noakowski?
Thank you.
Thanks. So, also, to the comments by AARP, which a couple of years ago, we had a vote, and it passed in 2015. I guess the implication of those comments was we can never change our mind. So, you guys are just stuck with it now. It probably would've been good if there'd been more research done, frankly, by business owners and stuff in the areas that were going to be dramatically affected by that vote in 2015. But it passed. It did. That's true. 21% of the people voted. So, by golly, I guess we should never go back and look at maybe redoing this now that we've got a whole community that's really upset about this. I reject that premise. There's nothing wrong with me suggesting, the implication, I think, was that something nefarious was going on, because I was suggesting maybe we should look at this again. I don't know. This is billions of dollars. We might, you know, if you got a lot of people unhappy with the end product, maybe we shouldn't be spending billions of dollars to just make people mad. That doesn't make a lot of sense. I don't really see the harm in revisiting it, and there was certainly, there's certainly nothing nefarious or anything else about it. So, I don't know that there's anything in the city charter, Ed, or anything that I can recall that says you cannot go back and revisit something that's already passed at the ballot if voters want to pass again, pass something, again, something different. That was my motion, that might be the one that's being recalled, that I mentioned failed 2 to 6. I said, "Hey, let's go back and revisit the thing that passed in 2015. Let's, let's give voters another crack at it." I made my motion, and it failed. That had nothing to do with the eight-hour rule. That, that, it's a completely different thing. That would've affected South Central. That would've affected all the light rail lines, but I failed. So, we're coming back with something different, have staff do a little bit of proposal. This is a different take on it, and it only affects, really, I would say, the northern part of the city, where I think the three of us who represent the northern part of the city have some qualms about whether light rail is really an effective deal for our districts. And also, it's a long way in the future while our roads are crumbling right now. I think that's really the crux of this argument. So, the 2 to 6 failure vote, that was a different thing. That was what ARP was, ARP was talking about, putting something back on the ballot to revisit 104 that passed in 2015. That failed. Now, we're coming back with something different. I don't know, I guess the implication is we can't keep coming back and discussing this issue. Well, it's a, what, $31 billion plan over 35 years? It probably should've got a lot more scrutiny, I would argue, given the number of hearings we're having about this now at the time. But it didn't. There were a few of us, I think Sal and myself in particular, who railed long and hard about this. I spoke with every group, Maria Hyatt, our transportation director, and I were just talking about this the other day. She and I would go out and speak to groups, and, and we didn't always agree, but we, we discussed the issues and so forth and bantered away. But unfortunately, we were not invited to every living room in Phoenix. So, not every person availed themselves of the privilege of hearing our incredibly insightful dialogue about the merits or, or downfalls or pitfalls of Prop 104. But here we are again. We've got a bigger audience, frankly, than we did then, and I think more discussion on this issue is certainly better than less. I think probably the members of the audience would agree. But this, this today is a new motion. It was on a previous agenda, but got withdrawn, so we never had a vote. It didn't fail. If it had failed before, this same thing had failed a month ago, or I guess really at our last meeting, would we be able to just do it again, Ed, without a reconsideration?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, what I'm being told is that there was an item that failed on June 27th. It was put in for reconsideration. The reconsideration was withdrawn on July the 5th. I also just want to emphasize, what staff will be doing with the eight-hour rule is we will first be establishing what...
Can I stop? Can I stop? So, we get to do a reconsideration, right? I mean, we get to do a reconsideration, and the reconsideration was delayed till now.
The reconsideration was withdrawn.
Yeah.
It was, there was a, this is a different item brought back now to examine this.
Yeah.
And just, just to clarify, what it is staff is examining is we're first going to establish the resources necessary to expedite street repaving over a five-year period, and then the council will, and, and bring the, examine the options, which could include using Transportation 2050 revenues to meet that schedule. So, that's, that's what staff will be examining under the authority from this.
So, just to be clear, what, what Ed just said was, we had a vote, it failed, there was reconsideration, reconsideration was withdrawn.
Withdrawn.
And you just said, "This is a different item."
Right.
Different item. Key word being "different item."
So, I will, Mayor, can I speak?
Yes.
So, it may be coming back as a eight-hour rule. That's the way we bring things back. We find a little area where to bring things back. On June 27th, we voted, and it was a diversion of future T-2050 light rail funds to be used for current payment preservation projects. Then it came back, or was up for reconsideration. There's a formal letter for reconsideration of the item. July 5th is when the reconsideration was removed from the agenda, so we didn't reconsider it. So, now it's coming back in a different phase of, we want to give staff an eight-hour rule so that they can do the work that they need to do to look at what we voted on on June 27th, at pavement preservations, and being able to preserve those streets and areas to repave them. So, we can call it a duck, whatever we want to call it. We can change it around, however we want to call it. It still goes back to the June 27th timeline. If you read that item, it's just coming back in a different light.
Vice Mayor?
I would just say that's wrong. So, we withdrew the item that was being reconsidered. That was a separate thing. This is simply an eight-hour rule. This doesn't, in a, in a practical matter, Ed, does this divert anything? Does this move anything around as the June 27th item would have?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, this item gives staff the authority to bring data to you to make decisions. It does not, it does not actually do any of that.
And then, we'll figure out what we're gonna do. I think, I think the mayor's original idea was to take something to a subcommittee, but we thought we'd do this. But regardless, it's a, it's a separate item. This, this is a separate item. They may be slightly analogous, but they're definitely not the same in any, really, in any way, shape, or form, I would argue. But, okay.
They may not be the same in the way it goes and follows, but we will see how it ends up landing, and we'll end up seeing how, what ends up happening. Just follow the, stay tuned.
Absolutely. I'm getting irritated now, so, anyway, councilwoman?
Thank you, Mayor. This is an eight-hour rule request, and I support it. I, I, I want to let people know, I'm not against light rail. I do think that there are other solutions that we need to pursue, and we're going to be talking about bus rabbit, rabbit transit, and I think that might be an alternative that we look at. There's a lot of different avenues that we can look at. But right now, is, I get a lot of calls about the roads, lack of sidewalks, repair, and I, and I, I don't think it's just in my district. I mean, I, I drive Camelback a lot, and that's a pretty bad road. Sal, you've got a bad road in your district. But I, but I do think we need to look at this rule, see if we can even apply it. The analysis from the attorneys may say, "No, we can't." Then we have to look at other alternatives to help our roads, but I think we need to at least open up the dialogue.
Actually, I'm gonna call for the vote. Would you call a rule?
Mayor, am I, are you gonna be allowed to ask questions here?
No. Sal, you just talk too much. I'm kidding you.
Okay, thanks. Had my hand up. Well, let me light it up a little bit, if you don't mind.
Because we're gonna lose person here with wine.
I'd like to ask, well...
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. This is to staff. Last time we had met, we had this discussion that the four-lane part of South Central, I want to focus a lot on the South Central line, I'll go into that, was going to be submitted to the federal government. Is that still on path to be submitted? As part of the light rail project, not as something else?
Mayor, Councilman DeCiccio, there was a July 31st date that had been discussed in terms of making a submission to the Federal Transit Administration so that the project could enter into its next phase in the, in the federal funding process. And so, based on some feedback from the Federal Transit Administration, there was a request to hold off on making that submission until after this process was completed with the community process, with the meetings that are going to be held, and then brought back to the council for a decision so that that could be submitted to the Federal Transit Administration at that time.
So, the city is still maintaining that we're going to be submitting, let's say it comes in that we will submit if the public process comes through and says, "We want four lanes, or no trains, or anything else like that." We will submit by the December deadline, four lanes.
The submission will be based on the council action later in September.
So, let me, okay, that's all I needed to hear. Okay? Because South Phoenix is about to get screwed. I just want you guys to know that. You're about to get screwed in this process. And here's what's gonna happen. You have to go through this. I've been through it long enough. Government will lie to you. They will lead you on. They will tell you, all these public meetings will matter. But let me tell you what's gonna end up happening. They're gonna come through and say, "Hey, we don't have time to get it in time by the January, the December deadline. We don't have time to engineer it. We don't have time to do that." They'll separate it, and then you're gonna get screwed. You're gonna end up getting stuck. So, at the end of the day, to Mr. Kennedy's point here, I mean, I'm going to support getting rid of one line, two lines, three lines, whatever it takes to do that. I've always maintained that. This motion, this eight-hour rule, is disguised. It's a way of killing off the light rail. It is. And I'm gonna be supporting of that, because I've always been supportive of getting rid of the light rail. I think it's a waste of money. I think it's not right. But I think at the same time, you have to be upfront and truthful with the public, not what staff is saying to you here, because it's all a bunch of mumbo jumbo. They're gonna lie to you, and that's what's going to occur. Businesses in that area will go out of business. This word "delay," it's, it's just a word, because at the end of the day, it will kill off at least those two light rail lines. Let me make myself insanely, let me make myself incredibly clear. Our roads are an embarrassment to the city of Phoenix, and they are a danger to the public. Our roads are an embarrassment, and our roads are a danger to the public, the condition that they're in today. Any amount of monies that needs to go, needs to go. Second, this delay thing is really a motion to kill the light rail, and I'm good with that. I support it. Third, South Phoenix, I'm sorry about this, because if you look to the north part of the city of Phoenix, they got the four lanes, they got this really nice area. You're not gonna get that. I'm gonna tell you that right now, they're going to lie to you, and they're gonna delay you, delay you until you weed, weed yourselves out of it, and you're gonna end up getting screwed. The second part of it, the, the other part of it is, do I group? Oh, Celia, I'm sorry you're gonna be treated like this, because you're going to be completely neglected again. The politicians, the staff, everyone's gonna let you down. At the end of the day, your needs, your wants, the things that you need for, your businesses will go out of business. I'm sorry about that. I apologize on behalf of everyone here, because at the end of the day, all your businesses are going to be out of business. When they put that construction in there, you're going to be taken advantage of. The north side of it had four lanes, the south gets two lanes? Really? Think about it. What happens if there's an emergency? What happens if there's a crisis? What happens with that area out there when people feel like they don't want to go down to that area ever again? So, the only thing I'm gonna ask this council to do, by separating these things, they've already said South Phoenix is going to be treated differently. The only thing I'm gonna ask is treat them all the same, have the entire package come to the city council so that they can see it in a transparent way. Don't separate it, because once you separate it, these individuals are gonna be taken advantage of, and that's not fair to them. It's not fair to the public that we represent. We have a responsibility, a fiduciary responsibility, to take care of them and tell them the truth. We need to do that. So, from my end of it, I'll be voting for one lane, or one rail line, two lines, call it delay, call it whatever you want, because I call it killing those two lines. Then it puts in play the ability to kill off the rest of the stuff. But until it's done, it won't happen. So, I'm gonna be supporting this today only because I know what the underlying thing is going to be, because it is part of my objective. And Dana, we don't agree on a lot of things, but when we do, one thing we do agree on is transparency. And this is not transparent, the process that you're seeing today. You're just not seeing the truth of this, because this is what's gonna end up coming out. Mark my words. He said, "Well, we're gonna work on it." I'm telling you, that decision's already been made not to include the four lanes. It's already been made not to include you, and it's not gonna happen. Sorry, Celia, we're part of, you can't, you're not allowed to. Sorry. I would, I'm afraid of you. I know, I am. You're tough. You are. I've already learned my lesson. So, at the end of the day, I will be supportive of this, but at the end of the day, you're gonna be taken advantage of. Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else on the council? Roll call.
DeCiccio?
Yeah.
Guevara?
No.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Noakowski?
I'd like to explain my vote. I'll be voting no on this, because I believe it might affect the light rail down South Central. There's a lot of confusion right now, so I want to make sure that people know that. We're gonna advocate and continue to make sure that we get our fair share in South Phoenix.
Pastor?
Councilman DeCiccio, thank you for proving my point, and I am a no.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
I'm just gonna explain my vote. I think I've been pretty transparent about this. Anybody here in the audience confused about my views about light rail? You think I'm like, really excited about light rail? Go light rail? No, of course not. But this is just studying it. It is different than the stuff we talked about before in an extremely substantive way, in that unfortunately, much as I'd like to do it today, it's not killing off anything. My hope is that we'll be removing the two light rail lines going north and using the money to pave our streets, as Councilman DeCiccio suggested. They're, they're awful. And so, that would be a worthy goal, and that's certainly why I'm participating in this and signed the three-person letter, and I'm voting yes.
Williams?
Well, I'll explain my vote, because I support light rail. I have for 30 years, back to Valtrons. I've been involved in trying to get this valley out light rail. But when you look at transportation needs in this city, when you consider, Sal thinks North Phoenix... when you consider, Sal thinks North Phoenix is Dunlap. I hate to tell you, hon, but I go to New River Road. And about a third of that doesn't even have buses, streets, sidewalks. But our main arterials are really, really in bad shape. And whether it's Happy Valley Road, Deer Valley Road, or Camelback, I am very concerned about how the conditions are, what it does to cars. I think it helps create accidents, it slows down police, it slows down fire. And I just see as we are borrowing money from one fund to upfront some pavement, which would then be paid back at some time in the future. Would it perhaps delay, even possibly kill a couple projects that are no longer needed or wanted? That's possible. It's not determined, it hasn't been decided. And I think I've been very clear from the very beginning on my position on this, and that I am supporting the light rail. I absolutely, I need it to come all the way central, from South Central through town to Metro Center. The only thing that's gonna keep Metro Center alive is to have that cross the bridge, across the road, and provide better access to that area. It brings jobs, it brings new businesses, it improves transportation routes, and it would get it to the west side of I-17. We're gonna have a complete rail line in this valley. It starts in Phoenix, all roads come to Phoenix, and we have to have different options. So, we each have our own reasons for supporting this, or not supporting this today. But I think it's very important that we bring this forward. We do some research to see if it's possible to fix those potholes, improve some sidewalks, and make this city safer for drivers. Because we're never gonna eliminate cars, never. It's not gonna happen. But we have to have different options for transportation, so I'm voting yes. Five to three, passes. Now go to item...
Eighty-eight?
Eighty-eight.
Mayor, move approval of item eighty-eight.
We have a second, I believe, uh, do you need to declare a conflict?
Mayor, yes, I have a potential conflict on this item, so I will not be voting.
Okay. Any discussion, comments? Mary, now roll call.
DeCiccio? Mendoza? Noakowski?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yeah.
Waring?
Yes.
Mayor Williams?
Yes. Item 104?
Mayor, move approval of item 104.
I have to recuse myself from item 104.
Okay.
Or I have a conflict.
You have a conflict?
Yeah.
Do you also have a conflict?
Yes, I also have a conflict.
Okay. Well, we have cards? Okay. Lorenzo Vareles?
We didn't hear a second. She can't, she's got a conflict.
I will second.
Okay. Lorenzo Vareles? Okay. Marcos Zapata? Would be following him?
Uh, my name is Luke, uh, this is Lorenzo. She only speaks Spanish, and so I'm gonna translate to my best for her. So, it may take a few more minutes than the two minutes that are allotted.
Si, buenas tardes, mi nombre es Lorenzo Valdez.
Good afternoon, my name is Lorenzo Valdez.
La razón por la cual estoy aquí una vez más aquí ante ustedes.
The reason that I am here in front of you again today...
Hace un año, el 23 de marzo, este que pasó?
Uh, a year ago, on the 23rd of March...
Los oficiales le arrebataron la vida a mi hijo, Francisco Valdez.
The, your police officers took the life of my son, Francisco Valdez.
Y yo vengo aquí ante ustedes porque yo quiero que, que se haga justicia por mi hijo, porque él no, se merecía esta forma en que le quitaron la vida.
And I am here before you, demanding that you give justice for my son, because he did not deserve to die the way that he died.
Ellos están diciendo que mi hijo los atacó.
Your police are saying that my son attacked?
Okay. Si fue así, es lo que no entiendo, el por qué, me le tiraron tantos balazos a mi hijo en su espalda.
Uh, if that is the case, then I don't understand why they shot him so many times in the back.
Y yo espero que ustedes me escuchen, fue un, es un sufrimiento que me dejaron a mí, a mis hijos.
And I hope that you listen to me. This has been a huge suffering and pain for myself and my children.
Y yo les pido que así como ustedes hacen justicia por lo de ustedes, que hagan justicia por la vida de mi hijo Francisco.
And I ask that you do right by, by my family and I, and that you do justice on, on, for my son.
Es un dolor que me dejaron a mí, que yo no entiendo el por qué, cuando le arrebataron la vida a mi hijo. En ese momento ya no me dejaron estar ningún minuto ahí al lado de él.
I also don't understand that once the police had shot my son, they didn't let me get anywhere near him.
Y yo quiero pedirles que pongan un alto a toda esa violencia. Hay muchas formas de cómo ellos pueden ayudarle a uno. Si ellos no podían ayudarme a mí en esa forma.
And I am asking you to stand and stop the violence of the police. There are many ways that police can de-escalate situations.
Porque ellos supieron cuando ellos entraron, yo y mi hijo le dijimos a ellos que, que él padecía de depresión y era bipolar, y él ocupaba de sus medicinas.
Because the police knew when they went in that he was suffering from depression and bipolar. That's what I had called for, and I told the police officers before they went into the house.
Y nomás en segundos, en cuanto me sacaron a mí de mi trailer, cuando yo y los balazos corrí, ya entonces ya no me dejaron meterme a mí a, a ver qué era lo que estaba pasando con mi hijo.
And the police took me out of the house, and as I turned to walk away, they went in, and that's when I heard the shots fired.
Y yo es lo que les pido, por favor, que se haga justicia por mi hijo, y que no se vuelva a repetir en más familias esa violencia que ellos toman. Ya ahorita ya no se confía en ellos.
And so, I ask that you would do justice by my family, and also for other families that will call the police because of situations like this.
Yo han pasado cosas, si yo la verdad, ya no, no tengo confianza ya en hablarles a ellos. Porque hasta meninos tienen mucho miedo en, en que yo les marque a ellos.
And personally, I don't have any more faith in calling the police. Uh, my children are afraid of the police and ask me not to call them.
Como les digo, es un sufrimiento que dejaron en, en mi hogar y en mis dos niños. Ellos ahorita necesitan de mucha ayuda, y yo también estoy ahorita en un tratamiento de depresión. Y que no se vuelva a repetir en más familias, que pongan un alto a todo eso.
This has been a huge suffering for my family and for my children. Uh, my children now have to have therapy, and I need to get therapy for myself and for my family.
Y que no permitan que ellos hagan cosas así, se lavan sus manos con la sangre de nuestros hijos, y ellos quedan libres, y le dejan un dolor en su corazón. Y es todo lo que yo les pido, por favor, que me escuchen.
The police wash their hands of this, and they leave the families with a broken heart. So, I ask that you take action to not let this happen anymore.
Es todo lo que les puedo decir, yo y espero que me escuchen, y sea justicia por mi hijo.
That's all that I have to say, and I ask that you hear me and do justice for my son.
Porque le quitaron su vida a él, y él dejó tres niños. Y un sufrimiento en su madre, y en sus hermanos.
Because they took his life, and it is a suffering for his mother and for his brothers and his family. Thank you.
Es todo, gracias.
I believe this item is, uh, seeking approval of contracts with school districts for school resource officers. Is that correct? Okay, thank you. Marcos Zapata?
Good afternoon, everybody. My name, my name is Marcos Zapata. I'm totally blind since the two years old. I'm here because I'm, I'm part of the violence from the police departments. What happened, I can, I'm gonna share my story, a little bit of my story. I came from the Arrowhead Mall with my daughter on 83rd. I took the route 83rd to McDowell. That's a transfer point for me to get to the other bus to go to my house. I went to, my daughter, I was with my daughter. My daughter decides to, decided to go to the, to drink some water. And I told her, no, wait for the bus. And she goes, no, let me, I want to drink some water. I was trying to go to the bathroom too, but at the same time, okay. I decided, you go to the, drink water, and I go to, to the bathroom. And she goes, no, don't go to the bathroom. And I go, no, it's not fair, let me go to the bathroom. So, when I went to, I told her to take me to the door. She took me to the door. When I entered, um, to the ba, the bathroom, I put my stuff, my tennis shoes and my sandals, uh, by the sink. I heard someone flushing the toilet. And I waited for about ten to fifteen seconds. Then I, I decided to go to where the journals are. Most of the cuties, they're kinda the same layout. So, there is a wall that divides the bathroom from the sink. So, I was touching with my left finger, I'm sorry, with my left side, with my left hand, uh, where the wall is. And I was walking as slow, so I don't crash into anybody if somebody come out, come on. And I was snapping my fingers. This is, snapping the fingers is to use echolocation for me to figure out distance from, how far I'm approaching to other staff. When I was approaching to the journals, um, I was doing the same thing, just snapping the fingers. And somebody turned around really quick and pushed me hard from, in my chest. And, and I hear saying, um, something like, get off of me, and then he threw me to the ground. He grabbed my legs, and, uh, and next time, I, um, I hear, um, somebody opened the door. And at the same time, I screamed to my daughter to get help, to get help, because something was going on. Uh, when he, when the other person opened the door, he, he screamed, "A choyo was a police." He never mentioned it. He never mentioned that, wow, he was a police. And he, he put the handcuffs on me, and I turned around to him. And I say, "Look at me, I'm blind." I say both, in Spanish and English, "Estoy ciego, look at my eyes." There was no prosthetic in my right eye. And he didn't care, he still pulled the handcuffs on me. At some point, he put his legs next to my left side, and I thought, and I, and I thought he was gonna kick me or kill me at the same time. He was so scared. Next time, the other police, the both police make me stand up. There was no eyes, there was no eye in, in my right side, my socket was open. He, they took me out. I was before, I, 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 when, when I was in the exit door, even though the police, one of the police pushed me out, and my daughter screamed to me, "No!" I never expect this to happen to me, I'm totally blind, like I say. And I hopefully this, this, you guys can do something about it, because imagine, as a blind person, being violent by the, by the police, I don't think it's fair. They need to stop those things. And they need to, they need to find a way to control, or, uh, the, or to find another ways to figure out what's going on in the environmental places.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, and I hopefully there's something you guys can fix about this.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, is there a way for us to get a report on, on the two cases, please?
Mayor, Councilman Noakowski, absolutely, we will prepare a report for the council.
Heather? Heather Hamel?
Mayor, council members, my name's Heather Hamel. And I'm here to address the fact that there is an epidemic of police violence in this city. Just this week, um, our, the number of officer-involved shootings by Phoenix PD rose from thirty-five to thirty-seven, and the death toll in the city rose from seventeen to nineteen. We have had more police shootings this, so far this year, and it's only August. The New York City had in all of last year. A city that is, what, three times the size of us, four times the size of us in terms of population. We've had more officer-involved shootings this year than any other major city in the country, including LA, including Chicago, including New York. And I was here just a few months ago when this was being discussed. And I heard the chief of Phoenix PD, Chief Jerry Williams, say that this epidemic of police violence was due to a rise in civilian violence. And as Marco testified, well, actually, I should say, something that Marco left out of his testimony was the fact that after he was brutally attacked by a police officer, who could very clearly see that he was blind, he was charged with aggravated assault on an officer. And so, Chief Jerry Williams has recently said, you know, you can see that there's been an increase in civilian violence, because you see an increase in aggravated assaults on an officer charges. And as Marco's case demonstrates, oftentimes, those charges are just trumped-up charges that Phoenix PD uses to cover up their violence.
Please, have some respect for the speaker.
So, we are demanding, um, I, I didn't think it was disrespectful. We are demanding an immediate cease of funding for Phoenix PD. Until this epidemic can be corralled and put under control, we're asking that no more money be spent on hiring any new officers, on giving them any new weapons, on approving any new grants, including this burn grant that's on your agenda today. That, by the way, incentivizes Phoenix PD to go out and harass people and rake up drug arrests.
Thank you for...
Thank you.
Ally? Followed by Jamar Williams.
Good afternoon, mayor and council members. My name is Ally Bones. I am the CEO of the Arizona Coalition to End Sexual and Domestic Violence. And I'm here today with our partners to ask and demand that the city council consider putting a moratorium on spending with regards to hiring new police officers and addressing new funding requests from the city of Phoenix Police Department until the issue of police violence is considered and addressed by this city. I represent victims of domestic and sexual violence throughout the state of Arizona. And victims make many calculations when they are determining whether or not they are going to call the police and seek assistance with the violence that they are experiencing. And fearing that something will happen to themselves or their family members is part of that calculation and decision-making process that they make when determining whether or not they are gonna seek what should be public safety. So, this crisis requires us to think critically about what public safety means and the role of law enforcement in our community. The continuing violence is impacting not only victim safety, but community safety. And the city of Phoenix must take this issue very seriously. Thank you.
Thank you, Ally. Next is Jamar Williams. Followed by Michael Monahan.
Mayor, council members, thank you. My name is Jamar Williams, I'm from Phoenix Metro, Black Lives Matter. Your relationship with the Phoenix police officer is a record-breaking endeavor nationally. That should be shocking. Recently, I heard Chief Williams say that her officers don't go out picking fights. They don't go out looking for fights. But I know that to be untrue. But I know that to be untrue. A few months ago, I had, I was riding my bike and I had stopped and pulled over and I was watching Phoenix police interact with a community member. I felt for that community member's safety and I wanted to watch to see if I could help that person out in any way. These officers were teasing that person. Before I knew it, I was concerned for my own safety because those officers came and confronted me. They actually physically threatened me. And I'm not, I'm not making that up, I'm not exaggerating, but it gets worse. One of those officers said to me, "We own you." And that's a direct quote from that officer's mouth. "We own you." But it's worse than that because he was right. But he doesn't have to be. He's only right because you allow them to do what they're doing. He's only right because you haven't put a stop to it. You let them remind us of that ugly truth. They remind us every time they arrest us and they don't need to. They remind us every time they shoot at us without consequence. They remind us every time they kill us. It's really a simple request. Stop letting them do this. Thank you.
Thank you. Followed by Paris Wallace.
Mayor, council, my name is Michael Moynihan. I'm also a representative of Justice That Works. And to begin, I think the best way to describe this is that I am a multiple survivor of police violence. I have been beaten so badly that I could not walk. And for a lot of this, I'd forgotten what had happened until what happened with Michael Brown a few years ago. Because we have a tendency to normalize violence against particular people or particular groups of people and say that this type of violence is okay, and thus, we permit that violence to continue. But it is not okay for our people to be devalued in such a way that our lives do not matter while we are caring about the business of our lives. And since the topic that is before you right now is talking about student resource officers, I implore you to hear the words that I say, that 90% of the time that I have been accosted by police in my life, it happened before I turned 18 years old. So when we put more cops with arbitrary impunity power in contact with our young people who are already terrified by the police, we stand the risk of continuing the oppression of people and the terrorizing of our communities. We need, really need to think about how we strategically organize ourselves so that we can better benefit all of the people. Justice That Works believes that justice is not a punitive response, which is how justice is normally formed in our community, but in that which provides for the flourishing of all human beings. And the police and the criminal punishment system does not do that now. So I stand with my constituents and we say that we want a moratorium on the spending of police and a cease to hiring of all of the police officers until we can develop a way together to find a peaceful resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Paris Wallace. And then Luke Black.
Council, mayor, welcome back from vacation. You all look well-rested. I hope you enjoyed your time. I'm here as a parent, actually. I have two young children, a seven-year-old and a 10-year-old, that enjoy their school system here. Longtime resident, most of my life, I've been here, right up the street. I'm actually in District Four. What I really want you guys to understand is that as my seven-year-old is, is in class and going to school and SROs are roaming around the hallways and, you know, it's terrifying. It's, I'm just going to be honest, it's terrifying as a parent, right? I have a young black son and a young black daughter, right? My son is 10. He's already in that school-to-prison pipeline. He gets written up for things that 10-year-old boys do every day, being silly, laughing with friends, real petty offenses. You all know about being petty, I'm sure, right? So what I'm asking is for you to suspend SROs in schools. I don't care if they're retired, I don't care if it's JoJo and them down at the bank. I don't need police officers intimidating my seven-year-old and my 10-year-old. If y'all don't have children, and I know you do, right? It's not an act-right type of deal. You can't tell a seven-year-old to act right or comply. That's ridiculous. A 10-year-old boy doesn't know how to comply. Those words don't exist in their language yet. Every SRO you put into a school terrifies children, and I'm speaking from my own personal experience. My house was broken into, did I call the police? No, I did not. My community came and supported us because my children were scared. If I bring a police officer to my home, they worry for me. Now, you put police officers in their classrooms, shaking hands and laughing and trying to pretend, that sends a mixed message because on the streets, that's not what cops are like. It sends a really mixed message. As a parent, I'm asking you, don't confuse my children.
Thank you. Ed, I need to ask you, we don't select the schools, isn't the school district, isn't the procedure, they contact us and ask, request an officer?
Mayor Williams, yes, the school resource officers are only in schools that have requested to have school resource officers and provide the funding for school resource officers.
So the funding comes from the school? Or the district?
Two-thirds or three-quarters of it, the funding is from the school district and one-third or one-quarter, and Chief Kurtenbach will correct me, comes from the city.
Okay, thank you.
From a grant, doesn't it?
It can come from a grant. In some cases, school districts actually use their own funds. It can be both.
And then Joanne, Scott Woods.
I'm, I'm actually going to use the, my time. Our demands are pretty clear. No new funding, no new funding distributions to the police until you address the violence. No new hires until you address the violence. And stop killing us. That's the three demands. We, you treat us like accountability and transparency is a radical idea. It's not. It just lacks courage on your part. We have the courage to be here right now. Will you have that courage? I'd actually like to talk quickly to the officers that are in this room. Y'all know this is happening. You know these stories. These are shared in the locker rooms. And I guarantee you that among yourselves, you talk about what is happening in your department. You can be on this side. You don't have to be the most violent police department in this country. We have about 30 seconds left, and I would like to invite everybody that is here to stand. We're going to take that time in a moment of silence for the folks that have been killed, the 19 folks that have been killed by this police force. Thank you all for standing.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. You're just in favor, but you don't want to speak. Orlando Arenas? I'm probably saying that last name really wrong. Sorry.
Thank you, mayor and city council. The police has killed at least 50 people in Arizona in 2016, including six Native people. There have been 37 police officer-involved shootings in 2018, setting an all-time new Truth is that poor communities, especially poor communities of color, are being locked up, sent away, killed by law enforcement. Equal protection under the law is not negotiable. And we have the right to move freely without intimidation, detention, deportation, or death by public institutions charged with our safety. We demand an end to mass incarceration and continuing inequalities of black, brown, and poor white people within the criminal justice system. We demand equality and the safety of all persons regardless of sexual orientation and gender identity. The, the Phoenix Police Department's are, are getting military weapons and equipment from grenade launchers to armed tanks left over from the Pentagon's wars, escalating the criminalization of and the violence against poor communities. The war on drugs and the drug policing became an excuse to bring military-grade weapons and equipment to local communities and armed local police to look like soldiers in combat. Today, young black males and Native Americans are most likely to be killed by police than any other racial group. Truth is, instead of waging war on poverty, we have been waging war on the poor and at home and abroad to benefit a few. We have the right to protect our communities from the ravages and the weapons of war. We demand the militarization of our communities on the border and the interior. That includes ending federal programs that send military equipment into local and state communities and a cease to call, to build the wall at the US Mexican border.
Thank you very much. That's all the cards I have. Any comments, discussion? Councilman?
So, you know, I do feel sorry for this one gentleman, and I do believe that we need to find out what happened there. I don't know what occurred, but I think we have a responsibility to the public and to you in particular, to find out what actually occurred in that bathroom. If it happened that way, it's very disturbing on its own. I don't know because I think there are always two sides to any story or any presentation. And I think we have an obligation to find out. So Ed, I'd like to make sure we find that out. I was very disturbed by that, just by that alone, sir. Second, I mean, this whole thing that's occurring, this debate, this national debate, and yes, a seven-year-old, even a six-year-old knows to respect police officers. They're in our family, it is ingrained in them that they obey the police, that they are their friend, they are there to protect them. It is what it is. I mean, we each have a different way of how we present things and how we look at our own families. I like these guys. I think that they do a good job. Do we have problems with the police at times? Sure. And we find out about it. That's what we're about to look into with this gentleman here. I don't know what occurs in your neighborhood or anything else, but I do know what mine, I respect them. And I think that there's another side to this. The other side of it is this, is that what's occurring right now, people are being taught, they're being trained, they're being told not to obey the police. This has never happened before in my history, in my history, in my life. I'm just telling you from my perspective, we grew up this way. My dad was an immigrant, my mom was an immigrant. They came here barely speaking English. And we were taught from day one that the people that are in the blue are here to protect us and they are here with, that deserve our respect. If you look at my children, they will go up to every one of these officers and say, "Thank you for protecting us." They tell them that. It's taught them. Well, no, they're not. Okay, well, it is the same. I don't see a color, but that's another issue. I'm not, I'm not going to get into a debate, it doesn't matter, I'm going to be in my perspective, I heard yours, you're going to hear mine. Or you don't have to, you know, that's your choice. But at the end of the day, a lot of the violence that you're starting to see, I would appreciate you guys walking out if you don't want to hear it. That's okay because I'm going to say it and I'm going to say it.
Hey, stop.
Well, you're the racist. You're being a racist today. You are. By using that language, you're being a racist, and I'm going to call you out on it. You're being a racist. You're being a racist. You are. You're calling it right off the bat. So, so what's going to happen here?
He has the floor, you are out of order.
And people can't address that. That's okay. So here's the deal, on this issue here, on the SROs, anybody up here can choose not to have it in their area, and I'll take it. I will have a police officer in every school if that's the case in my district. If they wanted to do that, I would love to have them in there. So if anybody wants to cancel the SRO, the police officer in their schools, I will find every way to get that into my district. I'm going to be supporting this because I think the police officers do overall overwhelmingly a great job protecting our citizenry. And there is a situation that's occurring in our society today that it's okay to demean them. I just don't think it is. We deal with every case individually, and that's just the way it should be. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments? Roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Mendoza.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Williams.
Yes. I believe that takes us to item 108. Do I have a motion? Pardon me?
I'm voting out.
Yeah.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Guevara.
Yes.
Mendoza.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Williams.
Yes. Yes, seven to one. Thank you. I, I think that's all the items. Oh, 159? Oh, I guess I was trying to skip that, wasn't I? I accidentally, didn't mean to. Joanne?
Two minutes. Good evening, Mayor Williams and council members. Thank you for reviewing my petition and considering the longitudinal study to track the effect of officer-involved shootings on two of the goals of the police department's 2017-2019 strategic plan, the expansion of body-worn cameras and the introduction of an early intervention system. In 2014, ASU and the department collaborated on the 2009-2014 officer-involved shooting review that stressed the need for more training using de-escalation techniques. Unfortunately, on December 2nd, 2014, the shooting of fallen citizen Remain Brisbane brought our city into national prominence for use of force, as did Michael Brown of Ferguson and Eric Gardner of New York City. Our citizen coalition of 18 organizations, People Demanding Action, now called People Demanding Justice, began presenting 10 solutions to build trust in our city and eventually collaborated with the Phoenix Police Department. Body cams and the early intervention system were numbers one and seven. I find it reassuring that the police department is moving on in agreement to have a professor from ASU to be assigned to the police department staff to perform research on the effect of important policing issues such as these, under the guidance and expertise of an onsite research professional. I also find it reassuring that the mayor and city council have recently rated public safety as our city's number-one goal. Thank you. And these are copies of the 10 solutions that we had in 2015.
Do you have comments?
Yes, I'd just like to make a statement. I just want to note that it's very clear today that there's a major problem with officer-involved shootings and that I think it's something that both the citizens and our police department agree with. And I would hope that, I would agree that Chief Williams would also agree with this being an issue. We're now at 37 shootings for the year, and we still have four months left to go for the remainder of the year to end. As we've seen today, our constituents are very concerned. And I just wanted to publicly make a statement because this is an important issue for me. And it's an important issue for my district. It's a, it's an, and it's an important issue for our police department. So I was, just asked what steps that we, what steps can we take to make sure this happens less often and eventually make it so that it doesn't happen at all? I would hope that the people reach out to my office with their concerns and with their ideas so that we can proactively work towards a solution to this problem. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. Do we have a motion on, or do we need one? I'm referring this to staff.
Mayor, staff is actually working on much of what Ms. Scott Woods put into her request, so there actually is not council action required on this. It is being reviewed and considered by the police department. I believe they've been talking with Ms. Woods.
All right. And she's shaking her head yes, so that's a good sign. Okay.
I have a question because you said, is considering it? I would like to know that it is part of it and it is embedded as to what the request is. So will you come back and say, this is what we took out of the petition and, and it become part of the ASU study? Or how will we know that?
I'll ask Executive Assistant Chief Kurtenbach to come and give more details on how they are working with ASU on this issue. how they are working with ASU on this issue. Mayor Williams, Councilwoman Pastor, this is a multi-layered approach to trying to identify the causes for the violence that we're seeing in our city. So with regard to the petition, and Ms. Scott Woods alluded to this, we partnered with ASU for a study from 2009 to 2014 to look at our officer-involved shootings. With your support, we have now partnered with the National Police Foundation to do the same thing that we did then, except to dig more deeply, to find the causes, to find what's happening. In addition to that, we've also entered an agreement with Arizona State University to have a clinical professor on staff with the Police Department, starting in January of 2019, to perform studies just as Ms. Scott Woods is asking us to perform.
I just, I wanted to hear it. Thank you. Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay.
I've just had a question. Why January?
Mayor Williams, Councilman DeCiccio, the only reason is to get the professor on staff from ASU in that time. I've already met with the professor. We're working on bringing him on board full-time from the other duties that he has with Arizona State University right now. He teaches, he has other responsibilities, so we're working with the university to bring him on staff full-time.
Why not bring him on part-time? If you think it's important? I don't know. I'm just asking the question.
Councilman DeCiccio, Chief Williams, and the Police Department, we agree that it is very important, but we are working with our partner, Arizona State University, to bring the professor on board.
Well, you didn't answer the question, but that's okay. What's the role of these, this professor, then? I mean, I, I'm not a big fan of, I got great grades through school, I got A's, all that stuff, but at the end of the day, most professors that I saw and I worked and I had really didn't have a good working knowledge of the real world that was out there. So what's his background that you've talked to?
This particular professor actually was a police officer in the Midwest previously. He is very focused on problem-oriented, problem-oriented policing and he wants to look at our issues in a holistic manner. Specifically, look at our training inside of the organization, building on the study that the National Police Foundation is going to do. And when we talk about training, training at all levels of the organization, which includes management development, leadership development, to ensure, as was mentioned by at least one person here, that there isn't some systemic issue that we're missing. This is where we are committed to being a transparent organization. But just as Ms. Scott Woods asked of us, is that, particularly she asked for this longitudinal study as it relates to body-worn cameras and early intervention systems. We want to make sure that there is a connection between what policies we have in place, what procedures we are implementing, those particular practices, that they're as effective as they can be.
And you'll also be able to look at external factors that are out there in the public, or not?
Yes, sir.
So when I talk about external factors, what some of the individuals are doing or saying in those violent situations, correct? You're going to be taking a look at every single one of those situations and determine what occurred and what happened. Because it's not just the police officer, you have two people in there too, about more than two, I mean, two parties, I should say. You have the police officer and you have the other party in there. And the other party could have been in this position where they were not obeying orders and they thought they could charge a police officer, they thought they could touch a police officer's weapon, they thought they could do things that would just put the other officer in danger. We're going to be looking at that, correct?
Mayor Williams, Councilman DeCiccio, that's the function of the National Police Foundation, that is the study that they are conducting right now, yes.
Okay, and then how about the, and I've maintained this for some time now, that we really do need, at least maybe not all parts, well, actually, I think every part of the city does, should have a two-person, a two-police-officer car vehicle. Are we going to be looking at that too? Two officers in a car?
Mayor Williams, Councilman DeCiccio, we're looking at all options to keep our officers safe. Part of the reason why we don't have two officer units throughout the city is a function of staffing.
Yeah, because the politicians let you down, is what happened. They cut off the funding to the police and now attrition took over. And that attrition has literally put the City of Phoenix in, I think, a precarious situation, because now you have police officers on their own confronting individuals where they are going to be feeling threatened, where if you had another person there at the same time, it could de-escalate things significantly, because that police officer's going to feel a lot safer if someone's charging them, the other officer could use a taser, could use other things on them. So I would think that whatever we're doing, Chief, what is your title? I forgot.
Councilman, my official title is Executive Assistant Chief.
Okay, sorry about that. Sorry, Chief, then. We really ought to be looking at moving that up forward. If you're going to be bringing somebody on board, if they're going to be presenting, putting together a plan, then you need to be doing it now. I think January is too late, too long. If you want to find a way to do it sooner, I think you'd be better off doing that and I think you're going to start seeing things. I, at the very least, it's going to take time for that individual to be able to put together a plan. And it just delays things for at least another year, if you really believe this is the right thing to do. I think we ought to be looking at moving it faster. Thank you, Mayor.
So Councilman DeCiccio and Mayor Williams, if I could just clarify, it's January when the professor will be fully onboarded to the Police Department, part of our staff. But we are already working with that professor and Professor Charles Katz from Arizona State University, who led the previous '09-14 study. So I don't want to create any misconceptions that we are not moving forward, that we don't think this is important, we're doing it, it'll just be January when he is on staff full-time.
Mayor, and I'll be done with this. I really do believe we ought to be looking at every situation where we've had a shooting and what occurred. And I believe that that, why can't we just do that right now, City Manager? If we could put together a list-
Mayor, Councilman DeCiccio, we are actually, the study that the Council approved with the National Police Foundation, that is, it is a holistic view of each one, all parties involved.
I'm not asking, I know, but I'm just saying, we should be able to, that, that report's, I'm asking for a report now. I'm asking for a report of all the officer-involved shootings in the last two years and what occurred and what, what both parties did in that situation. I'd like to see that. It's not a report, it's, it's part of a report.
Mayor, Councilman DeCiccio, we can do that and, and that data is available. What we're describing from the National Police Foundation is a much deeper dive into that.
That's a deeper study.
But we do have that other data available, we can make that available.
All right, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. I don't think we have any further business. I think this is, we're adjourned.